To order this special meeting of the Caledonian Township Board of Trustees. This is a special meeting called for the purpose of discussing the recent Emmons Drain, Drainage District improvements by the Kent County Drain Commission. Item one would be to call the roll to ensure we have a quorum, Mr. Snoyk.
Here.
Mr. Harrison's here, Ms. Henry.
Here.
Mr. Zoller.
Here.
And Mr. Robertson.
Here.
We do have a quorum. I'd ask that we stand so we can do pledge of allegiance and an invocation, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We give you thanks, not just for the beautiful weather, but the opportunity to be here this evening to represent our friends and neighbors as elected officials. We recognize the privilege that is in history. And here within this community, we ask that you get our work, that we can work together respectfully and do the will of those who placed us here. You have those who protect us while we're here, and the police and fire and military. Give them your protection and comfort to their families. We ask this all in your name, amen. All right, this is a special meeting with one item listed. And as I mentioned, this is the Emmons Drain, Emmett Lake Drain District. I will note that a, the Drain Commissioner has joined us, so we thank him for that. A number of questions have come up, as is often the case when these types of projects are proposed, asking why are they doing it? How do they determine how people pay? I know that the Drain Commissioner held informational meetings and also a day of review to answer some of those questions. The Utility Committee of the Township met last Friday, which was the day after the opportunity to meet with the Drain Commissioner and his facts, but, and his staff. And a number of questions were raised that frankly, we didn't have clear answers to, to provide to our board members or to our community. And then also, because the Utility Committee is a subset of the Township Board, we didn't feel comfortable making, taking an official stance that only three members of the Township Board are on the, are on the Utility Committee, and therefore they could not take a position on this issue for the township. So because of the late developments and unanswered questions, we decided to set a public meeting, this special meeting, and that's our purpose here. If it's appropriate, Ken, and if you're willing, can you give us an introduction or a capitalization of the plan? It will give you leeway of time and then open to board questions and community questions as well. So again, thank you. I will say, you know, we've seen Ken before. He's a member of the community. We've had smaller projects undertaken by the Drain Commission. So some of us up here are familiar with at least the powers of the Drain Commission. I believe you're actually in the state constitution. And so it's a longstanding and necessary service performed, but I think we want to understand the issue. In particular, for those of you who have been near Township Hall here on Cherry Valley, it's not unusual to have flooding across the street in the spring. And so I know that's what initiated this concern. And I'll just add a couple more things. It's on the contributing to that, of course, is a larger area of the watershed. And therefore, we've seen additional elements added to, other than in the immediate area. And I think that's where the questions came up and then just some of the cost allocation. So with that, Ken, if you could introduce us to the project and some of your thoughts sort of help set the table on that, please.
All right. Yeah, it's not easy.
We do have a camera that, yeah, you can use.
Yeah.
For individuals.
It's, it's, it's not a simple, this is a big project. It's nothing simple. I'll take, I'll try and keep it as general as I can and answer questions that may arise. So the outlined area is the district. It is the watershed that sheds and flows toward the drain, toward the stream, Emmett Lake Drain. Emmett Lake Drain starts on the south end up by Caledonia Church, crosses underneath Cherry Valley and picks up storm water that runs off from that development where Brands Restaurant and so forth is. And there's also a section that crosses by the hardware under Cherry Valley that picks up all those farm fields. Clemens Farm is probably, the complete farm is caught in that part of the drain as well. So that, but that section we didn't do anything with. They'll have to be addressed at a later date eventually. But at this point, with, with what was brought before us was the Cherry Valley flooding and the Road Commission couldn't fix the road because the water didn't drain through there effectively. And we've had calls every year from a number of property owners along there that want us to come in and clean that, that stream out, which we couldn't do because it wasn't a county drain. So when that petition was given to us, then we had to have BOD, a Board of Determination, which was held back in nineteen twenty, twenty-two at the Caledonia Auditorium. And it had quite a turnout. It was a very good turnout, actually. And during that time, the board then listened to all the requests for the project and requests for not having the project. And at the end of the presentations and all the public communication at that time, the board at that time determined the project necessary. At which time, I'm given an order that I have to proceed with the maintenance and improvements of that drain, whatever those would be.
Can, can you tell us?
The scope is not determined at that time.
Who, who serves on the Board of Determination?
There's three, there's three people that we have to choose that's in Kent County, but outside of this watershed. And so we had an engineer that lived in Wyoming. At that time, I think he was an engineer for the city of Wyoming. We had, I don't remember the other two that were on there. But there, usually we'll try to get a Township Supervisor to send on the board, an engineer, and then a, just a property owner.
Okay, thank you.
On those boards.
Explain that, okay, continue.
All right, and, and, but thanks for that, it's a good question, Brian. So then, they then listen to all the information and they discuss it amongst them and they have to make a decision that night. And when that's made, that becomes final. There's a, there's a ten-day appeal period for anybody at that meeting that wants to appeal their decision, that's the time to do it. No one appealed, it becomes law. It's set.
Okay.
A court cannot reverse that order. So I am now obligated under law to move forward with that project. During that time, we go through all the public comments because they're all recorded. We have a court recorder there and all those are documented. And there was several that were concerned if we're going to do this project, then we want a Hundred Street up by Caledonia Church fixed, so we're not flooding all the time. So that become a major part of this project. At that Board of Determination, the PowerPoint did include the full scope of the work that we're doing. It was presented during that time. Nothing's been added, nothing's been taken away. We're doing exactly what was discussed and what I was ordered to do. And then that brings us to where we are. So when we have the scope of work that's been, the engineers are hired and they go through and they evaluate the whole drain and they determine what needs work, what doesn't. We had a lot of culverts that were failing or undersized, creating a lot of the water holdback. Those will be replaced and scaled up to the proper size. So then we, after we get that all done, then we do the day of letting and then we get the bids. And then we have the day of review. We, for some, there was also boundaries because we added, we almost doubled the size of the drain with all that north of Eighty-Fourth Street all the way to the river. That was a lot of drain to add and it was in very poor shape. We have a lot of serious erosion on the part, the section that is west of Cherry Valley. And going from Cherry Valley to the river, we have a lot of blockage. There's a lot of wood debris. Some places a channel is just mucked in. So it's not allowing several beaver dams. It's not allowing good flow, which is why Cherry Valley keeps flooding. We also have a couple of them driveways, those culverts that are in the drain. They are way undersized. Those have to be put in, replaced, upgraded. And those are the same size culvert that is being put under Cherry Valley. Two very expensive driveways right there. We have two foot of sediment we have to dig out of there, get back down to base flow. That is also a big part of why Cherry Valley floods. So we have to also have protection so that on a, I think it's a fifty-year storm. I'm not absolutely sure what storm they have to engineer that to. But even at, at a fifty, around a twenty-five to fifty-year storm, the volume of water going through there would still over, go over Cherry Valley because the road sits too low. So that is, was also included to raise that road to the right elevation so that when we do get a high water event, the road will not flood. And so that, that was addressed. So then we look at, well, what part does the district pay for and what doesn't the district pay for? Any culverts outside of being a project, because it's a project, those culverts are covered within the project cost. If it was just a maintenance issue where we are going out and say a culvert collapsed and we're going just to fix that culvert, the property owner pays for the culvert. So the drain code is kind of back and forth on that. But in this case, with the Road Commission, we only cover fifty percent because that's an agreement we have with the Road Commission and the county. So they're covering fifty percent of that culvert, which is actually a bridge because the culverts aren't big enough. So it's classified as a bridge and the road raising is all covered by the Road Commission. They're paying that part. But we run it with our program because we can do it cheaper and with less permitting that they would have to go through. So we'll do that. We'll do that with MDOT often throughout the county. If they have a road project that's affecting our drain, we will put the culverts in before they do the road project because they don't, then they don't have to do all the permitting that they otherwise would. So then we have the two big culverts on Broadmoor that are failing at the BP and at Fox Motors. And those we got MDOT because MDOT requires their, it's their easement, it's their right of way, I should say. They require a certain standard of pipe that has to be put in there right of way. So if they ever widen that, they're more likely going to fill that drain and put pipe, and pipe it. So we have to put the sized pipe in that they dictate. When they do that, then I can hold them accountable to the cost of that, which they did. They're paying for that. So that part is not part of it. So that, most of our work is done on the maintenance of the new drain that's been added. There's a lot of work that has to be done on that stretch. A lot of stabilization. We have a lot of erosion that has to be stabilized. And then a lot of clearing as we get closer to the river. On the south end, we're Cherry Valley where we're a Hundred Street, cuts through there, and Kinsey Avenue, we have to hold water back because the piping cannot handle the amount of water we're putting down there. When we get those other culverts replaced along Broadmoor, we're going to allow a lot more water to go through there. And on a twenty-five-year stone, what, storm, which is not uncommon, those new culverts we put in under Emmons and Main Street are within two foot of overflowing. So we, that's with the restriction of the other tubes that are way undersized. So with those being enlarged, we're going to allow a lot more water to go through there faster. And that's going to cause trouble. So we're keeping the water up by the church. They have pipe, they piped it through their parking lot. That's staying the same. We're going to raise a Hundred Street. We got to put a bigger culvert under there. The district is putting the pipe in. The Road Commission is going to raise the grade and replace the road. It's not part of our project. We're working, we're tearing it out, but they're going to do the rebuild. We're just getting the pipe in that we need for the water to flow underneath the road. Now, our big problem is we got to hold that water back. And we have a wetland there along Cherry Valley that holds a little bit of water, but we're going to roughly about double that because I got the property from the Kinsey Avenue. The Road Commission quickly needed that over to the Drain Commission at no cost. And then the bike trail is owned by County Parks and they gave me a lifetime easement over that land. They still own the land. The county still owns the land, but we got a permanent easement. So all that land is going to be dug out and brought down to the same level as the wetland that runs along Cherry Valley. So we can hold that water back for a more, a higher volume on our average storms. If we get into a fifty-year, it's not enough. But the property owner has a, there is a private owner that owns that wetland, even though they don't have any say on it because it's all MDOT right of way. They have a chunk that's high ground there and they won't sell it. So I just got to wait. Eventually, they're going to see they can't get to it, has no value. We'll see if something works out. That'll give us substantially a lot more holding up there down the road. But in the meantime, we'll get, we'll get started and get what we can to start relieving the pressure. A lot of that dirt, we're still working on what we're going to do with it. First, we're going to haul it and that's kind of where we're at right now. But the property owner owns that field. They're on vacation and I can't get with them until next week. But we've been talking about buying a temporary easement on that field and what we would do is strip that topsoil, take that dirt and we dig out and lay it in there. We'd have, it'll raise that, that field about two foot, the whole length of the dirt we got to dig out. And then respread the topsoil. That would be the most cost-effective way. That's not final yet. I'm still working that out when they get home. But they seem interested, so I'm encouraged with it. But we'll have to come up with somewhere, somehow, to move that dirt. But we, we got a rough idea what that cost would be and that's in the, in the cost of the project. So then we have to pay the contractors. So how we pay the contractors is we take the total area. We calculate how many miles of MDOT road there is and they get assessed for impervious surface, which is a larger percentage than a farmer's field that has a lot more absorption. So on a farmer's field, the formula is about two percent of runoff is what's figured. With your hard surfaces, it's much higher. It goes up as high as seven, eight percent. Your roads are that with, because they're paved. The county roads are a big chunk. All the miles of county roads are calculated and then the Road Commission has to pay that. And then we have, the village has roads. They get assessed for that, plus they're at-large. And of course, the township gets an at-large. And then from there, we look at all our commercial properties that have impervious runoff. They get a higher percentage than all the homeowners in the farm fields. And then the rest is all broke up so much per acre.
Can you explain how the at-large is determined? For township, village and, yeah, township and village? I understand roads.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. So the at-large has been established way back before me. Percentages have been set by each local. And so I have carried through with the tradition. I haven't adjusted those.
So you're saying the Kent County Drain Commission has always had a formula for at-large?
Correct.
And you're applying that to us?
Exactly.
It might be different in Berry County or.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's not in statute, it's.
Well, yeah, we have to have the municipalities by law. We have to have an at-large portion for them. So, yeah, I, I don't mess with what tradition has been played out. I, I think commonality is a lot better than. Yeah. So, so the reason they do the at-large is because even though the people outside the district aren't shedding their water into the drain, but they're using this infrastructure, they're using the roads, the parking lots, everything that is being protected from this drain by moving the stormwater through, they're using it, they're getting benefit. So the at-large is then put on your local municipalities to cover that part of it.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, that was a good explanation, thank you, of the scope and the process and, and of the financing. If you're willing, can you take a seat? And I like to have people, if they have what I'd asked, just so we can keep orderly and organized. If people can come forward, if you have questions, comments, concerns, I'll try to capture those. Then let Ken come back up. Then it's not a back and forth and you don't get cross-examined but once tonight, rather than fourteen times. And then the board can jump in as well for clarity and so on. So without objection, I'll open what we will just say is a public comment period. Does any of them want to come forward, ask any questions regarding what we've heard as the explanation tonight? Yep, if you can just state your name, confirm that you live in Caledonian Township as a resident and that will allow us to capture for our minutes who is addressing us tonight.
Sure, Jeremy Bergworth, Caledonian Village resident and Township resident. I guess part of, I guess the question I have for, for Ken, if he could, if there's a way to visualize this a little bit better. He spoke about this and that here and there, and this field and that drain and this two feet of scraping off field height and all that kind of stuff. I couldn't quite keep track of if there's anything specific. He talked about the park area, I think the bike path goes through the park area and stuff like that. I guess I'd be interested in a little bit better clarity on specific actions. I, the information I found, I couldn't see a scope of work that showed, you know, those kinds of detail. I have had in the past surprise visitors from contractors commissioned by the Drain Commission cutting down trees in my backyard. To Ken's credit, when I called, he came out there and talked, talked me through it. And I have received better notice since then. This incident was a couple of years ago, but, so I do appreciate that progress. But what I'd like to be able to understand is exact scopes of work that's proposed for, beyond like a blue line on a paper. If we could be able to understand that, if that makes sense.
Understood. And I, I can attempt to aid on that, but let's get the other questions. I think Ken took for granted that a lot of us know when he talks about BP or the farm field next to the church, we kind of slid, slid right into it. So I follow it, but I understand your question and we'll address it.
Thank you.
Yep, all right. Other questions, comments, requests for clarification?
Hi there. Hi, I'm Rachel Hagan-Botham. I'm a village and township resident. In regards to.
You can address us, but then we'll ask him to respond, yeah.
Just in regards to, I'm a Glen Valley resident and my property is backs up to the creek. What kind of communication could we expect in this process as far as activity when it comes to our individual addresses? And specifically in regards to trees and foliage? Actually, if there's one we don't want, can we work with the contractor to remove it? You know, is that kind of communication or back and forth available or expected? First time ever going through this, so thank you very much.
Yep, understand the question and we'll, we'll get to it. Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Can I get to answer a question?
Yeah, absolutely, step on up.
My boss told me I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm Eric Tenoff and I live right here off of, on Eldridge Court, right here.
Okay.
Okay. And we were wondering when they determined to go north on Eighty-Fourth? Because we never received any communication that we were added to this. That's where we're a little confused because we've talked to all our neighbors and they're like, until we got our bill saying, oh, your, your thing is going up, whatever, seventeen, two thousand, whatever it is. They're like, why didn't we ever hear about this? We didn't hear about these meetings? We didn't have any communication about this? Now all of a sudden we're added to something else where I got quite a tax increase. I guess you call it. That's where we're confused. Our whole neighborhood and people on Eighty-Fourth, they're like, that's odd, we got it. And as far as I can tell, I don't know if much of Jasonville got it, but we're, we're a little confused why.
Okay, I understand, thank you. All right, anyone else? We've got our list. Yes, sir.
Hi, Justin Ketteler. I live at Gulf Meadows subdivision. Couple of years ago, I was assessed for a drainage project because my property is in the middle of the neighborhood and now I'm getting assessed again for this project because of the roads inclusion. And I just wondered if that's common for residents to be assessed for multiple drain districts or how that works exactly, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
One more.
Yep, all right.
Colleen Smith, I also live in Gulf Meadows. And my question is clarification on the boundaries, which seem pretty random to me. Part of our neighborhood got assessed, but not all of it. We're pretty much all on the same level plane, I would call it. There's no continental divide running through there that sends water one way versus another. So clarification on that, please.
Okay. All right, anyone else? See, it gets easier when someone goes first.
I, I can answer that question.
Well, let's make sure they're all there, then we'll work through them. Craig, if you, go for it.
I was going to try to, so my, my house and Justin's are in the Bezing drain. Your house is in the Emmons Drain along with Cranks and a couple others. And what doesn't make sense to me, but what I was told when I called a couple of weeks ago to the Drain Commission is, because part of our street is in the Emmons Drain, they decided to charge all of us. Now, all of us, the rest of us who are not in the Drainage District are getting charged seventy-eight dollars for that little strip of our land. That will lead me to another question later with Ken, but just to clarify that.
Ken, I'll go through to do the best I can and then if I get something wrong or you think you can add, let's do that. So the first question, where are the improvements? Ken walked through or talked through, rather, but didn't point to the map. I'd say there's three major things happening. One is right over here, just north of the Township. Sure, yep.
So the initial reason for is this flooding that occurs on Cherry Valley. Here's Broadmoor, here's Eighty-Fourth Street. So I'd say here where this creek goes under, it comes over the road and we end up closing the road almost every year. And we have to reroute traffic, emergency vehicles and so on. So that is what the Road Commission said. Ken, would you please help us so that we don't have to, that we can raise the road and so on? But there's a drainage contributor to why we're doing repairs there. So that was the, the, what initiated all, you know, the house of cards, the domino here. So the blue line is we say God and glaciers determine that. So it's a bathtub and everything in there goes into kind of this drain line. Everything's going to pour down into the drain. And the drain's a fancy word for ditches and streams and the river and things like that. It's not like we determine that. Again, gravity and water determines that. So as Ken looks up and says, well, if I'm fixing this problem, there's other problems and this contributes because it's all flowing this direction. You then go, we're working on a point to Main Street where the BP gas station and Fox Motors are. There's a big ditch there and there's culverts and the water runs through there. And those are of your size and age and so on, we need to repair and replace those. You have the explanation that if they fail on their own and as a one-off, they would probably charge the property owner to do it. But as part of this project, it now becomes part of the project cost, which means if the project fixes up and the Drain Commission pays, actually, you say then?
Not on that, that's MDOT. So MDOT is paying for the big box culvert, so that's approximately three hundred thousand dollars. Oh, we're doing this, putting this on, doing this.
And then the final piece is this, is in here, in this general area, where the trail cuts across M thirty-seven, Hundred Street. So you've got Brands and Pizza Hut and the other. where the trail cuts across M thirty-seven, Hundred Street, so you've got Brands and, uh, Pizza Hut and the others here. Across the street, uh, and here's the church, this little circle here. Church has been giving back to the community by actually using the ponds in front of them to catch water, but that's not sufficient either. So an additional pond is going to be, uh, dug in here. An M dot donated property, so that's saved money in the cost of the project.
Kent County Road Commission.
Kent County Road Commission, so when they, uh, did the trail and, uh, we realigned the streets, they came into that property. And so a large retention pond will be loaded or there to capture some of the water. And then what to do with all the dirt, because they're making a pond, they're hoping to spread it in one of these fields. If not, they'll have to haul it somewhere, so that's the, where the improvements will occur. The other questions were, um, the impact on Glen Valley, the removal of trees, some may want to save trees by pond, some may want to lose trees. So what is, you can answer that. Same when we do roads, people are saying, don't take my trees, and we have some people say, boy, can you take all of these? Because they're dead or dying or you want them soaked. How do you accommodate landowner concern when it comes to trees?
That, that was a good question, I just never thought about addressing that. So when I, we added all that new drain, I had to get easements on from all the property owners along that whole. So, and, and that can be very expensive. So what I did to start off, I personally went and got easement signed from every one of those property owners. They could have asked for compensation for those easements, but in light of keeping the cost of project down, everyone agreed to forfeit any kind of compensation. So there's about eight hundred thousand dollars right there that is not added to this project. And that's because those people were very generous and given me easement on their property. I think that has to be noted. So along with that, then, every property had some unique things that they wanted protected. And those have been, have been recorded and they're on the actual construction plan. So in Kent County, the way I work in Kent County is any tree that's six inches or bigger cannot be removed by contractor in our easement unless I hoop. I keep control, so with you, with the property owners, yes, you will get a separate notice. And I will be, uh, with the contractor, reveal before they go on site and going through what trees are to remove and what they can. So that's very important to these property owners, they got beautiful woods. We're planting trees to get shade on our drain, I don't want a clear drop.
But you do the trees you'd like to have removed, right about there, what you were asking?
I have a neighbor who asked me to come and ask about removal because that tree's threatening their home. But I also have a tree planted by my dad that I sense will be removed.
And we definitely will identify that. So when you get the notice, um...
It'll be in the mail?
It'll come in the mail.
The Drain Commission.
Call our office and make that, just say, hey, I need to have you come up and reveal my trees with me.
Okay, that's fantastic.
That, that's what I recommend everybody to do. Because we don't want to cut more trees now than we have to, if you want someone to look at it. But again, if they're not affecting the drain, I can't remove them. If we don't need to remove for access, that just adds cost, and I can't, I can't landscape public ponds. So our goal is to save as many trees as possible.
All right. Going north of the initial project, the Cherry Valley culvert, how did you decide? And what notice and, uh, what notices went to people to let them know that this was occurring and that it might be a financial impact? What's required and what was, uh?
Going north?
Well, you're on, you took, is it Eldridge?
Yeah, Eldridge.
Yeah, so.
Oh, up the hill? Well, that, that's a different project. That's not us, that's the Road Commission. So what's gonna happen this summer, starting in, into June, early July, we'll be closing Cherry Valley up to the driveway that comes back here, I don't know what you call it. And we'll be probably just shy of seventy-sixth street. Well, it'll be closed at seventy-sixth, and we will, while the Road Commission is putting the new culverts in, we're gonna be working on those driveway culverts, because we'll need the big cranes for setting those, these are big culverts. And so we need big cranes in there to do that, so we're gonna do them together while the crane's in that location. And then Cherry Valley will be ripped up, and that work will be done at the same time that they're doing the bridge. When that is done, then we'll have that, I don't know if we'll finish paving, that's up to the Road Commission or just base payment. But then from that point, across eighty-fourth street and north and south of Cherry Valley, that's gonna be tore up. And that's gonna make that into a five-lane intersection, and that's all federal money. So we had a, the, the federal government wouldn't let us combine them, which we wanted to do. We have to finish one and stop and then start using federal money. And that's all Road Commission, I don't have any involvement in that details. So that's, that's a different project.
And Ken, the, the final question, Gulf Meadows, how you determined who to charge and what to charge each other? I would say it's just because you're in the same neighborhood, again, God and the glaciers, you might be in a different drainage watershed. And so you'll get them.
Greg had it pretty close. Again, Angie, my deputy, she's the one that handles all this, so she, she's really knowledgeable on it, but... So what happens with that condo is because it's a condo, you have green space. And that green space is part of Emmens drain. Greg's house is Beasley drain. And so because it's a common space, they, they're, it's a condo, there's no private, you, you assess the condo.
Got it.
We're, we're a state condo, not a, we're a state condo, not a condo development.
Yeah, but it's, the, the laws are the same with that.
The, the green space is owned in common.
Yeah, so...
Right of ways.
So the companies break up that cost between every condo in that association. Because the condo owns the green space, that's how that happened.
All right, and then, uh, I think that's the end of at least citizen questions. Now, board questions, and I guess I want to make one clarification, because I admit I came in here, I think, with a misunderstanding of how this progressed. So you're saying that all these, the three main elements, the, the Hundred Street retention pond, the culverts, uh, BP and Fox, and of course, the Cherry Valley flood issue, were all in the project largely all along. They weren't added, uh, at least in the original Board of Determination, they were able to look at the entirety of the project. You didn't add to it after it was presented there.
Here's what was presented at the BOD.
Can you turn it?
This one?
Other way.
Other way.
Other way. Like that, yep.
So when you look at it, oh, you're not...
No, back one quarter of a turn. And stop.
Right there.
All right, so here, the yellow, that's the southern part up by Caledonian Church, oh, that, yeah, good job, Al. And then we have, right in here is, is the, um, down by the river, heading to the river. This whole section in here is going through Glen Valley and that area. And then we've got some areas here going into Emmens, there's drainage issues in there that had to be looked at. So Joel had went out, my engineer had went out and did a rough view to get just a bird's eye view, what kind of work we're looking at. And so the board could, could see what the scope was. And then the added drain is on the other piece, and we didn't have that at that time, because it wasn't a county drain. We couldn't access that property. But we knew we had to add it because Cherry Valley wasn't gonna work if we didn't add it, so. Yeah, so this was all the existing Emmens drain that had issues, areas.
All right. Board members, questions, comments, statements?
It just, because I'm a part of the drain as well, uh, Ken, I have ten acres and it just so happens the boundary of the, of, goes right through the middle of my property. So am I a portion, and literally at my house, half the water flows north away from the drain, half flows south. So for someone like me and people like me with a larger parcel, are you paid a pro-rated based on it? Or because part of my parcel in it, all of it is assessed?
Now, based on the contour
Right.
of the higher edge, everything that is in the district of your land is part of it.
Right.
Everything on the outside is not calculated.
All right, okay.
And we, John, uh, Pinkbacker's brother one that had that, just the part of his land at that, those houses
Right.
is caught in the district, progressive was in it.
All right, okay, thanks.
Thanks. Mr. Zoller?
So I, I'm looking at, again, I'm looking at, um, you know, we'll say section eighteen.
You want to put the map up there so we...
We can put the map back up.
Now you've even lost me on section eighteen.
Well, basically, section eighteen's Craft to Patterson between seventy-sixth and eighty-fourth.
Yep.
Okay. So I'm looking at that, and that's part of our assessment, eighteen.
Right, and, yep, there.
And I'm looking at...
Your neighborhood.
So I'm going down, and we're along eighty-fourth street and Craft, in the middle is the neighborhood where Flyby and all those other houses are. They're getting assessed fifty dollars a parcel, and they're fully in the drainage district. Along with, we'll, we'll use another example. Near eighty-fourth and Patterson, your old parcels where you used to have your landscape business, they're getting charged fifty bucks. And they're fully in the drainage district. How did this get calculated where they're fifty dollars, they're fully in the drainage district? And you use my neighborhood, only a little bit of my neighborhood is, and we're getting charged. Some are charged a lot more, but everybody is at least seventy-eight dollars. How are we seventy-eight, they're fifty, how did they calculate this out? Doesn't make sense to me.
All right.
All right, so about two years back, we did the Behan Foley drain. All right, that was a million and a half, little, oh, close to two million dollar project. Very small district, they are part of that district. So eighty-fourth street, just shy of Craft, is in the Behan Foley drain. At that time, Emmens drain didn't exist up there. So when it runs underneath eighty-fourth street, it gets to the power lines, and then it stopped. So when Emmens was added, that section was added, then it took off from the end of the Behan Foley, and now it's Emmens, it goes to the river. So everybody up along Patterson, along, uh, Ninety-second Street, all those homes, all those properties were assessed for that concrete. They have a sixteen-year assessment, and none of them are under eight thousand dollars a year, or for their assessment. So, and Ray, one of the, the largest property owners is like dealing with a hundred thousand dollar assessment. But he has most of the land. So I have the flexibility in this case, whether to assess them for this project. But they have to pay, they have to pay the base cost. So all of the mailings, all of the notices that we had to do, um, on the initial startup, they have to be part of that assessment. But to add this onto those people, they'd all lose their house. So I made that decision, and that's one of the things the Drain Commission has the authority for. I made that decision to give them relief and not add this onto them this time around only.
Because all of us, all the rest of us in Gulf Meadows, just paid for the Beasley drain.
Yes, correct.
So it's kind of the same thing.
Yeah, but your, your numbers weren't even close to the same.
I'm, I'm asking these questions because I'm trying to wrap my arms around this whole thing.
They're good questions, Greg, I'm not...
You know, I'm trying to wrap my arms around this, this whole thing, and it's, uh...
So that's, that's, was a judgment call on my part. And that's, I have the authority to do that, and I had to weigh that out.
So next question, since you're up here. The largest landowner in the Semens drainage district
Yeah.
has most of the impervious, uh, parking lots, and they're not getting charged a dime.
I don't know about that.
The school district, is it?
Oh, yeah, I can't. They're the only exempt.
I, I've been reading, you can charge them.
Not, not public school, nor can I assess you guys for your properties.
But the school, it, I was reading about that, and, and that's where I, I want to verify, because it, it says you can, but if I'm wrong, I'll say I'm wrong. And we already paid mileage and everything like that. That, that's a huge part of this. They take up a lot of our water, they create a lot of our water.
I don't disagree.
And, but you charge churches.
Yeah.
So you're saying the law does not allow you to charge schools?
Schools, all right. Or any government entity. If it's federal land, if it's township land, if it's state land, I can't assess.
I saw the county didn't charge either, and, um, you know, we're getting it.
By acreage, but you can by at-large.
Correct, correct.
Can you charge at-large?
No.
No, all right.
We tried, trust me, I tried.
We poke the stick at you seven different angles, but...
And I don't want to get the school in the middle, but I look at that and say,
Yeah.
they're, they're huge benefactor.
Yeah, totally.
But I think he answered the question.
I, if, if I could just add, I, because I thought...
Additional questions, but...
I thought about, I thought about the same thing, but if you assess the school, the taxpayers end up paying for it anyway.
The same taxpayers, we're just getting it again.
Yeah, so in other words, you can say the school's paying for it, but it says no, taxpayers are paying for it, so, you know...
And, and then another question, Brian, I, I missed it, one lady back here asked is, can you be assessed from two different districts at one time? And the answer is yes. I am. I got the Clonfstein drain, I got the Duncan Lake drain, and I get hit by both of them. And we have a project starting to be bid out this fall that's as big as this one. And I'm gonna get hit twice, so I know the pain and I'll feel the pain.
I, one last question concern. Our drainage district doesn't end, or the dr- the water doesn't end at Hundred Eighth Street, Sommeberry County flows in here.
It's, I'm gonna think of Hundred Eighth.
So at Hundred Eighth, at our county line,
Yeah.
that water, Sommeberry County flows into Emmens, I know that.
A Hundred Eighth Street is the line.
That's prob- that's county line.
No, that, that is the high point line, everything, now, they don't have, they don't have water. So you could take probably the ditch along Hundred Eighth Street and possibly make that part of the, but that's about all you're gonna get. We looked at it.
What's the little tooth carve out there on the bottom of, uh, Hundred Eighth?
You know what, I can't answer that. I can't answer that.
All right.
That flows into Berry, probably.
I, I just, I have a question for you, Ken.
Yes.
Just, and maybe this is just for future reference, but did you, when did this original meeting take place with the Board of Determination?
It was in twenty-two.
So in twenty-twenty-two?
Yes.
So how were people notified then this was going to be talked about? So I'm just saying, even for future reference, if something comes up, how do we get notified?
By mailer, every household in the district. Now, I also include, and it's not required by law, but I also include all the potential future district. So we knew that that was gonna be requested to increase it, so we took a rough gander at what that new line was gonna be, and then we just went outside it. And we mailed everyone, so we made sure, I think if we're gonna have someone being assessed, and they're not part of the district, but they're gonna be, I think they should be informed and know about it, and give them a chance to be at that meeting. So they understand, so we always go above and beyond. But, you know, a lot of them don't realize it, and, and then we had a number of people that just built, moved in while that was long decided before they came here. And that, so I get they're surprised, I can understand that, but that's with a growing community.
One more question.
Yeah.
We have our village friends here, so if I live in the village, I'm being assessed.
Correct.
If I live in, but village residents are also township residents, are they paying twice, or are they, did you back out from the township that the village is paying their share?
Yeah, it's not based by township or village, it's based by acreage, so it keeps it clean.
And you subtracted out the village from the township?
Yeah, the at-large.
The at-large, yep, all right.
The at-large is where the adjustments are, yeah.
All right.
All right, good questions, I appreciate the question.
Well, I was hoping to beat you up and lower everyone's taxes tonight, but you've done a good job, uh, of answering, so thank you. Board members, other questions, comments, reflections? Well, Ken, thank you again for making your time here tonight. I do know it's not a popular job, uh, when you show up, uh, so hopefully we don't have to see you again for some time, uh, but we, I think none of us...
But this is done, and I don't think anything will be done in our lifetime.
Nobody wants stormwater backing up into their basements and yards and things like that.
And if a tree falls in the stream and any of you live on or near it, make sure you call the Drain Office right away. Because a fallen tree... Because a fallen tree, the water starts eroding around it, then we got sediment flowing, now we got clean sediment. We get the tree out of there, we'll have a guy come out, a hoop come out and take it out.
Do you want to take a report from three days ago?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, we got, we got a package.
All right, and then as we move our meeting ahead, we typically have a closing public comment period, then board comments. So does anyone wish to make closing comment? See, Ken won't hear, but we'll hear it. Any closing comment? Okay, board members? Okay, thank you all for, with someone.
Well, I was just gonna say, there was a concern on, on our part in whether it should be at this meeting or another, is, is that there is an option for the township and for anybody that's assessed to finance the assessment over a fifteen year period or pay it, pay it out. And as utility committee, although it wasn't real, or no, I guess it was just the executive committee, it'd be Brian, Joni, or maybe it was Brian and Allison. Anyway, we, and the comment I made as the treasurer is that we have sufficient funds in the general fund with plenty of reserve to pay the assessment entirely, which for the township is over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But there is the option for us and for anyone to finance this, and I think it's, Ken's already gone, fifteen years.
Yeah, but five percentage.
The estimate would be at five and a half percent. So as the township treasurer, given the, the reserve funds we have, I don't see any value in financing it. I would, my position as treasurer would be that we pay the assessment out of available funds and avoid the cost of financing, plus we'd have to pay for continuing disclosures, which would involve bringing in a financial consultant. So it's a lot of money, but it's less money than if we finance it.
All right. Any board comment?
Okay, John, sport?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, and we're done. Thank you all for making it to a special meeting.
Thank you, have a great night.